Good evening, everyone. We're going to be a couple of minutes late getting started tonight. We're waiting for our live stream to catch up with real time, so we'll be underway in about five minutes. All right, the hour has arrived and our digital output has kept up, caught up to real time, so we are ready to roll. Are we ready on that right? Ready on the left? All right. And we'll now call this Monday, October the 7th, Granville County Commissioners Meeting to Order, and I appreciate the audience's indulgence for us to work out a technical difficulty. So first call on Commissioner Tony W. Cozart for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Will you please bow with me? Gracious and loving God, our Father, as we come at the dawn of this day, realizing how blessed we are with the bounty of so many of your blessings, our hearts and thoughts go out to those who so adversely affected by Hurricane Helene, and, God, we lift them up before you today that all of their needs will be met, that they will be safe, and their support will be continuous. We pray for your guidance in this meeting tonight. We ask if your spirit will tell us what to say and what to do. For God, we come tonight to glorify you through our service, and even in our beloved Granville County, we lift up the Renn family in this season. We lift up all those families who are going through bereavement, those who are having challenges with various health and other issues. We just pray, God, that you will continue to look down upon us with favor, and we will forever give you all glory, honor, and praise. In your holy name we pray, amen. Will you stand with me, please, for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart, for that invocation and a pledge. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion when approved.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Russ May, seconded by Commissioner Rob Wilford. Are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Bring us to our introductions, recognition, and presentations, and I'm assuming that, Drew, you're going to handle the introduction for our finance person.
How about this? I will introduce the person who will do the introduction, so I'm going to introduce Finance Director Jennifer Baird to do the introduction.
That'll be perfect.
Good evening, Chair, Board. I am here to introduce the Granville County Assistant Finance Director to the board tonight. Her name is Lindsay Davidson. She began her tenure with Granville County on July the 8th. She has previously served as the Controller for Granville Health System, and in this role, she oversaw all areas of accounting, prepared annual financials, cost allocation reports, and provided leadership and support to payroll, accounts payable, and staff accountants. Before her promotion to Controller, Davidson worked as a financial analyst, collaborating with department heads to develop operating budgets and monitor Granville Health System's financial position throughout the year. She originally joined Granville Health System as a staff accountant, where she reconciled general ledger accounts, bank statements, while also serving as a backup to payroll. Lindsay is a Warren County native and currently resides in Vance County with her husband Ben and their 16-year-old daughter Morgan. Outside of work, she enjoys taking her daughter to barrel races and spending quality time with family. So I'll just say that in her three months with us, she has already proven to be an asset to our finance department, and we are lucky to have her.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, and administration. I'm truly honored to serve as the Assistant Finance Director for Granville County. I'm eager to collaborate with our dedicated team to ensure that county funds are managed with the utmost responsibility and integrity, maintaining the strong reputation of our finance departments among taxpayers. My commitment to fostering transparency and building trust within the community is unwavering, and I intend to leverage my knowledge, experience to further support our county's financial health. Over the past few months, I have been genuinely inspired by the remarkable leadership and transparency demonstrated within our county government. This has deepened my desire to contribute positively to our community, and I'm excited about the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I'm here to answer any questions you have, and I look forward to engaging with you in the future.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you very much. Good to see you.
I would invite Clerk to the Board Karen Evans to say a few words about our new deputy clerk, Jessica Todd, and if she would come down front, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It is truly a pleasure to be before you tonight to introduce Jessica Todd. She's only been here for a few weeks now, but I'm really excited to have her, and she's really off to not a good start, but a great start, and I'm so excited for all the work that we're going to do together. Jessica began her tenure at Granville County as Deputy Clerk to the Board of Commissioners on September 18th, and she has previously served as an Economic Development Specialist in Vance County. Before joining Vance County, she was Director of Operations for Henderson Collegiate Middle School, and she has also served as Operation Manager for Conduit LLC. Jessica brings experience in local government, education, and the corporate environment to this role. She currently serves on the Vance Charter School Foundation and the McGregor Hall Embassy Square Foundation Board of Directors. Jessica is a Henderson, North Carolina native, and she holds a Bachelor of Arts in Public and International Communication from North Carolina State University. She resides in Henderson with her daughter, Hopper. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the board. I look forward to working with you all.
Mr. Chair, while Karen is getting back to her seat, I'll just say that Finance Director and Clerk roles, we know and recognize those as being absolutely critical, but it's important that we develop, you know, succession planning and have backup capacity in all of those critical areas, and I'm really excited for our organization that we have been developing such high-quality kind of number twos across the board, and really I'm excited about Lindsay and Jessica being here at this point.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to have a proclamation recognizing National 4-H Week, and we've got our 4-H Cooperative Extension Representative, Ms. Lina Howell, here, as well as some of her 4-Hers, and I'm going to come down there and join you all.
Okay, before the official proclamation, I just wanted to say a few words. National 4-H Week is a fun-filled week to celebrate our members' accomplishments at the county, state, and national levels. In addition to theme-spirit days, Granville County 4-H is celebrating the occasion by hosting our second annual 4-H Livestock Show tomorrow night at 4:00 PM in the outside part of the Expo Center, so I hope to see some of you there, and all of y'all are welcome as well. These youth will exhibit their cow, sheep, goat, and pig projects that they've been working on for the better half of the year, and we're super excited to see their hard work. Granville County 4-H serves nearly 2,000 youth each year, and we appreciate your continued support as well as the recognition of this momentous occasion. Thank you. And then two of our longtime volunteers have their two kids are still in 4-H, but they've recently gone to college, and so they, the kids, wanted to write something to share tonight if we have time. All right, let's see. Okay. So Gavin and Reagan are twins, so they have very similar experiences in 4-H, and they got kind of nominated to be the representatives tonight for the youth, but here they are, so you can pretend that they're talking to you. They're much cuter than me. So Reagan says, "In 2019, at 13 years old, I joined Granville County 4-H and was a founding member in the Granville County 4-H Pop Shots Community Shooting Sports Club. Being part of 4-H over the past six years has been an amazing experience. I have participated in all disciplines except shotgun and learned that I absolutely love black powder. I was able to be one of the first to represent Granville County in 2023 when I tried out and was selected to take my muzzleloader to Nebraska and compete in the week-long National 4-H Shooting Tournament. I have had some incredible shooting instructors locally and nationally that have offered me patience and wisdom in the sport I love. They genuinely care for us and want us to succeed, but more importantly, want us to have fun and enjoy what we do. I have learned that competition is intense, anxiety-inducing, and crazy fun all at the same time. I have learned that youth can come together representing a wide range of ages, different schools, have different interests, and still develop a strong bond that creates everlasting friendship. I am grateful for the opportunities I've been given through Pop Shots, the leadership skills I have built through teamwork, and a variety of officer positions, the confidence I have gained, and the friends I have made. As I age out of 4-H, I hope to continue mentoring other youth, share my love for 4-H, and grow in shooting sports through the National muzzleloading rifle association." And then Gavin says, "As a member of Granville County 4-H Pop Shots, I have had the opportunity to grow personally in social and leadership skills. I have served as treasurer multiple times and secretary, as well as assisted on several committees to meet the club's needs. Through 4-H, I have had the opportunity to mentor young shooters in the club, serve in 4-H summer day camps, and attend state congress. I had the opportunity to build a Google Drive that adults and youth leaders could use to organize all aspects of our club's management. Overall, the strive, the club strives to represent the good that comes from the fun, safe, and responsible handling of firearms. Getting together on the range for practice or competition is good, clean fun, and my club members and I enjoy spending time together doing what we love. We learn from, coach, and support each other. This year, I took the opportunity to try out and was selected to represent the NC State archery team at the National 4-H Shooting Tournament in Nebraska. I was grateful to meet new people in the national division and be coached by some amazing instructors. Now that I am in college, I have been able to join the archery club and continue building on what 4-H has made possible."
We've got a proclamation for you all, and picture this in a fancy case, just for reading purposes here. Jump in the back on that one. Pile together like you like each other, right? All right, so this is a proclamation recognizing National 4-H Week. Whereas, whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, serving more than 6 million youth across the United States through hands-on learning, experiences in agriculture, science, citizenship, and healthy living. And, whereas, for over 100 years, 4-H has empowered young people with the skills and confidence needed to lead for a lifetime, fostering leadership, independence, and responsibility through its engaging programs. And, whereas, 4-H in North Carolina reaches over 260,000 youth annually, including hundreds of youth in Granville County, helping them to reach their fullest potential while contributing positively to their communities. And, whereas, the 4-H Youth Development Program in Granville County through the Cooperative Extension provides invaluable learning opportunities for young people to explore their interests, develop life skills, and serve their community. And, whereas, National 4-H Week observed the full, first full week of October highlights the remarkable efforts of 4-H members, volunteers, and supporters who make the lasting impact on the lives of the youth and their communities. And, whereas, the theme of National 4-H Week 2024, Beyond Ready, celebrates the preparedness, determination, and resilience of 4-H youth as they tackle real-world challenges and pursue their future goals. And, whereas, the success of 4-H program relies on the dedicated dedication of volunteers, the commitment of 4-H youth, and the support of families, educators, and community leaders. Now, Thor, now therefore, be it resolved that the Granville County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024, as National 4-H Week in Granville County, and urge all citizens to recognize and celebrate 4-H for its contributions to the community and the country, and its role in developing tomorrow's leaders, the 7th day of October. Signed Timothy J. Karen, Chairman of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment while everybody's going back to their seats? First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you at the 4-H. I think you're awesome, but I've also received a call from the Masonic Home, and they have some seven-year-old, and you guys won't be here for the end, that's why I'm saying this now, they have some seven-year-old oaks and elm trees that they're trying to find homes for. So if you all know of a place that needs an oak or an elm tree, please either let me know or let the Masonic Home know because they're willing to give them away. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a quick comment. 4-H played a huge role in my life as well. In 1980, my, this lady was at Michigan State University, saw an ad for a 4-H agent in Granville County, North Carolina. She didn't know where Granville County was, barely knew where North Carolina, North Carolina was. She, they flew her down, she took the job, they offered it to her, she became the 4-H agent for Granville County. Few months, she came in Ace Hardware and met me. A few months after that, we were married 43 and a half, almost 44 years ago, so I met my wife through 4-H. So that, that played a pretty good role in my life, that's right. So I have a special place for 4-H as well. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the comments from the board members as well. Next, we're going to hear a presentation from our Campo Regional Transportation and Safety Action Plan. And we are joined this evening by Kenneth Withrow, Senior Transportation Planner for Campo. And he will give us an update on Phase 1 of the Campo Blueprint for Safety and discussion for the next steps.
Thank you so much and good evening. It's good to be here in Granville County to be a part of this meeting and just glad to be able to share what we're looking to do for the greater Triangle region, which of course includes Granville County. Make sure this goes forward appropriately. Thank you. So what I'll do in terms of the content that I'll be providing for you all is basically giving you an introduction to the Blueprint for Safety and what it means, what we've done in terms of Phase 1 engagement. We'll have an interactive discussion, which includes two questions I'll pose for you all that you can answer amongst yourselves. We'll go into next steps. And for a brief bit, we wanted to include in light of some discussion that had occurred with the directors as well as the elected officials, is briefly just highlight NC DOT and transportation funding. Next slide, please. So why plan for road safety? We need to recognize that this community, and not only this community, but the Triangle has grown significantly, particularly over the past 30 to 40 years. I'll note 1980, the 80s was when it really had begun, particularly in the Raleigh-Durham area, and has significantly spread beyond that. And now incorporates, Campo incorporates not only Wake County, but includes portions of Franklin, Johnston, Granville, Harnett, and now Chatham County. So we've had tremendous growth. And in light of that, between 2018 and 2022, there are one, over 195,000 total crashes on roadways in our area. Of that, 2,700 of those crashes included injuries to pedestrians and bicyclists. And in light of that, 600 persons lost their lives on roadways in our area. So that's why it's important to plan for road safety. Next slide, please. I've included in this slide deck an infographic that we had utilized when we come to, or when we had come to Granville County to do various pop-ups. Pop-ups were events in which we would have at least four or five easels, table material, and we would share and provide information as to what was the Blueprint for Safety, what it was all about. And we can see from here the significance in terms of the crashes that were in Granville County as well as the serious crashes and serious deaths and injuries that had occurred in this region. So it was important to include that to let you all know that there was a specific touch for Granville County that we wanted to address. Next slide, please. And of course, these are the pictures of those crashes that have occurred throughout our region, and they happen on a daily basis. Next slide, please. So why plan for safety now? It is important to recognize that this is not just a Campo issue. The issue is of national importance. And therefore, the United States Department of Transportation has encouraged a national roadway strategy exercise in which local governments can get grants for what we call Safe Streets For All to reduce the number of serious injuries and crashes in their community. And the state of North Carolina just recently has adopted a strategic highway safety plan. In fact, the consulting firm that we are utilizing for this project has been the leader in this throughout the state and throughout the country. And so we have excellent expertise that are helping us in this exercise. Next slide, please. One thing that's important to note in planning for safety, we need to not only just address it as an NPO, as a specific project. It needs to be incorporated in what we're doing in terms of a metropolitan transportation plan. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan, being called Destination 2055, is an exercise that both the Caplar Area NPO and the Durham-Chapel-Hill-Carveral NPO, our sister NPO, are working together to create, to ensure that we meet specific goals, to ensure that we address not only safety, but we maintain that quality of life that is attracting people to this region. And of course, Goal 7 is to promote safety, health, and well-being. And we have objectives associated with those goals. And those are some points that I wanted to bring forward to you all. Next slide, please. So what does a transportation safety plan include? There must be a vision, of course, just as we have a vision for roads, bicycle, pedestrian facilities, transit. We need to have a vision and commitment to that goal. There needs to be data associated with this to make it clear and understood so that people know what we're looking at in terms of metrics. There needs to be stakeholder-led. This is where you all become involved in and others within the community. It needs to be reactive and proactive. What does that mean? Well, we are reacting to crashes that are occurring in the region, but we have to be proactive. And how do we address minimizing those crashes on our system? It needs to be multimodal. It needs to address roadways, bicycle, pedestrian facilities, transit facilities, and other facets that involve transportation. The goal is to make sure that when the public accesses our transportation system that they can access it and utilize, use it safely. We focus on short-term needs and their long-term goals. So for example, a short-term need may be something as basic as a traffic light or four-way stops or something at a particular location or lighting at a specific location. For example, in Granville County, I'll just think of a particular location along NC 96 near Witten. So that's an idea. And then the long-term goals would be how to improve that roadway if it is to, if a roadway is to be widened, what do we include to address safety along that roadway? Particularly if we're widening it from a two-lane to a four-lane facility or a two-lane to a three-lane facility, what do we do for that roadway? And there are many other things that we need to take into account. Next slide, please. And so the goals of a safety plan are to achieve significant reduction in those fatalities and serious injuries on the region's transportation system. And so what do we do? We need to inform other regional efforts so it's not just salient to just safety. It has to be integrated in other facets of transportation. There's increased awareness of transportation, safety, and risks. So it's cognizant to citizens that we are addressing not only improvements of a facility, but we need to make it safer. Identify needs and recommended safety improvements. Excuse me. Ensure consistency with the Highway Safety Improvement Plan and USDOT's funding programs. So it's integrated in that process and that we follow a safe system approach. Next slide, please. So the exercise that we're talking about, again, is just not salient to the Caplar Area NPO. We don't operate myopically in this region. So therefore, we have other entities that are engaged. So Central Pines Regional Council, they're doing a safety plan. They used to be called, of course, the Triangle J Council of Governments. The Durham-Chapel-Hill-Carveral NPO, they are implementing a Vision Zero Plan. And in fact, they are having a meeting tomorrow at North Carolina Central University where they're going to be talking about their plan, how they're rolling that out. The city of Raleigh is doing a safety action plan at this time that just got started just a few weeks ago. And the town of Knightdale has been more active in the process, more so they began theirs in the spring. So you have these event, these communities that are doing this. There are other communities in the region that have done programs and plans. And so this is an active exercise that we're doing throughout the region. Next slide, please. We had online engagement, and the survey is no longer live. That has been closed out. We've got a lot of input with regard to that survey. Over 800 survey participants provided data that we are calling over. Actually, our consultant firm, VHB, is calling over. And we're going to have the outcomes that were produced from those surveys that we will be sharing with you all as well. Next slide, please. So let's just briefly go into engagement. Next slide. The engagement exercise included a tremendous amount of participation involving these various facets, from creating the project website to holding a safety summit on March 14. We had technical advisory team meetings in the Phase 1 period from May to June. There's a lot of social media exercises. We're now doing your, our board and city council meetings. And we had a lot of public engagement events, particularly over the summer, where we had pop-ups from as far north as here in Granville County to as far south as Harnett County. Next slide, please. And again, just as an introduction to the plan, we had preliminary data review. We've talked about creating or addressing and creating the safety culture, how to engage the public in this particular process and develop, and had small group discussions on how to make, begin the process of engaging our public. Next slide, please. So we see from the summit, we created a top-down and bottom-up feature where we're wanting people from, who are elected officials all the way to the citizens that are every day doing their work. Everybody shares responsibility. Everybody does their part. And we want to provide value to help people understand that users have value. And what we need to do is make sure that every decision we make ensures that we are providing a safe way for people to travel in our region. Next slide, please. And so as we see here with regard to what's being presented, local elected officials in every facet of occupation and career, we want them engaged in this process. I would be remiss to say that NC DOT has been active in this process. They're sharing in the process of contributing to this project. And in fact, again, as I mentioned, they have just adopted a highway safety plan. And so we're wanting to make sure people are cognizant of what is going on in our region. I know that the news with regard to Hurricane Helene has really taken a lot of bandwidth in terms of coverage. But we wanted to make sure that we got this out to the public to let them be cognizant on how we're addressing safety. We did something similar to this back in 2012, 2013 with the Watch For Me program, where it focused on four of the major communities in the region, which were Raleigh-Durham, Chapel Hill, and Cary, where we, it made some improvements in those cities. That was just the beginning of providing an emphasis area on pedestrian safety. And now it's been expanded to really include a federal effort. And now that's why we're doing what we're doing. Next slide, please. Again, I mentioned the technical advisory team meetings. In our next phase, we'll be having more of those meetings. And we see that we've had the meetings throughout the region. Butler was the noted one that we had in Granville County. Next slide. Again, we talked about the media releases and posters and all the things that we basically flooded the community to ensure that we got the message out, noting its importance. Next slide, please. One of the locally engagement events that we had was the NC 540 Fest. That was in June of this year. And of course, that highway has just opened just a few days ago, actually September 28. That's the southern portion from I-40 south in, by Clayton and Johnston County and going west toward Holly Springs. That just opened up. And so we had the citizens come out, look at the highway, see what it's about. And we provided a pop-up at that event. And then all the other events that are shown here. Next slide, please. Again, this is just another set of events. Creedmore City Hall, of course, had an event on August 3. Next slide. And then we had some other events. This was the National Night Out that occurred in Youngsville, as far as that picture is concerned. Next slide. Okay, safety discussion. These are the two interactive questions that I posed to you all. So before I go any further, please take a look at the questions that are here. What are the safety issues observed, infrastructure and behavior that are in this, in your community, whether you live in Oxford, Butler, Creedmore, STEM, wherever you are? And what stands out and is different related to roadway safety for your community compared to the larger region? Again, we focused in on Granville County. And of course, the Caplar Area NPO covers a large geographic footprint in central North Carolina. So for those, depending on where you go to work or how you commute or travel, how, what stands out about your community versus what you're seeing in the larger regions? So that's something to be thinking about at this time. Next slide. And so let's go into quickly next steps. Again, we have begun Phase 2. This will be presented to the executive board. This is October. This will be presented on October 16. We'll have another safety summit along with a Phase 2 associated with the technical advisory team meetings. And again, we'll have another iteration of town board, city council, county commissioner meetings to, for you all to be involved in as well. Next slide, please. And so as a part of the next steps, what's occurring on the data level? Our consultant is working on finalizing analysis for the high injury network and risk networks. And we're going to, again, summarize the engagements, as I've mentioned, as a part of Phase 1 so that you know what was said in your particular community. We're going to promote another survey. And the key piece is to stay involved. And based on being a part of this presentation, again, thank you so much, we want you all to stay cognizant and involved in this process. Next slide, please. And again, these are just websites that we have where we want you to stay connected. Of course, the Campo website, which I'm involved in, and the contacts for the Blueprint for Safety. I'm project manager from the Campo side. VHB has project managers, or the main project manager is Lauren Blackburn along with Catherine, Catherine Sane. Next slide. So now, we're going to go quickly into NC DOT and transportation process[1658.44] So now we're going to go quickly into NC DOT and transportation process and the state transportation improvement process. We need to note that before I go further, let me mention that the programming process is been in place really since 2013, is adopted by the legislature where we have highway projects, transportation projects in three specific bins. Statewide Mobility, which address significant congestion and bottleneck on our systems throughout the state. Regional Impact, those are regional projects that connect the region such as NC 56 or NC 96 via various counties within our region. And then the Division needs projects, those are more of your local roadways and the one that comes to mind, particularly as I think about Wake County is 1010 Road. There are other roads in this area which would fall into that and I can't bring to my mind which one I want to pick out, but there's one particularly in Creedmore that I was just thinking about. But there's a breakdown of, of roads that are placed in bins on how they are categorized and funded. We recognize that there's statewide mobility gets 40% cut of the funds, regional impact and division impact are 30%. Next slide, please. And this just basically breaks down the categories we utilize with regard to the funding, which shows the categories on how we determine what is a statewide project, what is a regional project and what is a divisional project? Next slide, please. And then we break it up into various buckets on how they are funded. And let me just basically go to how we look at in terms of distribution. Of course, we have 40%, of course, all that money goes, recognizes a statewide funding where we apply highway safety, we address intersection maintenance, bridge replacement and rehabilitation along with construction, of course. Construction, of course, for regional impact projects also involves highway safety. And then also for divisional projects, there is the thing, the element that's very distinct is the NPO or direct attributable. That's largely a bin involving surface transportation, grant funds, and sometimes we apply local administrative program funds. So that's a lot of acronyms right there for those who are in the military and or particularly the Air Force, you know how you, we have a lot of acronyms that we utilize, but that's one of the facets that we have. Next slide, please. One of the things I want to let you know, we've broken up the, or the state has broken up into various categories. We have various regions, A, B, C, D through G. We're in Region C. Division Five includes Wake County, Durham County, Franklin County, then Person, Granville, Vance and Warren Counties. So it is broken up into that facet and then of course, we have other divisions around us. Campo includes Divisions Five, Four, Six and Eight. That's how extensive we are as far as a region is concerned. Next slide, please. And we note the funding availability of what is available for Division C, which is Division Five. Those are the funding categories and the funding amounts that we have. Next slide. And this is basically a breakout of the funding categories associated with road projects in our area. These are competitive projects that we must put forward because we're competing not only regionally but statewide for funding. Next slide, please. And this just basically shows the allocation of funding. Largely, we see that highway is the majority of the funding with non-highway being at around 6%. We flex at 4%. Next slide, please. And one of the things I wanted to share with you in terms of Division Five, in terms of the Division Needs category that had been asked about, there is no money really to do a lot that we want to do. We're $120 million in the hole and there are a whole lot of projects that need to be done in the region. So our, the work is cut out for us on how we manage and get projects funded, but Division, as far as Division, it's, 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 it's a mess. I'll just put it like that. Next slide, please. So this particular facet where I talk about NC DOT, if you have specific questions, what I'd like for you all to do is basically just go to my, my email address that had been given earlier, you have specific questions, just put those down there and I'll be able to funnel that to the proper persons who could answer specific questions that you all may have. But this just, just gives you a general understanding that it's a very complex issue. There's a lot that goes into funding DOT projects and with the outcomes that have occurred with regard to Hurricane Helene and what we're expecting to occur regarding Milton in Florida, depending on how it traverses north following Florida, we may have some impacts on what, what may occur with regard to funding for future projects. So a lot to digest there, but just wanted to let you know what is occurring from a safety, safety planning process and how things are done to address funding for highway projects. So thank you all very much. Glad to be here. And again, if you have any questions with regard to the issues associated with DOT funding, please put those in the, or send me, send the information to me via email. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sitting on the executive board, I think it's important for the residents of Granville County to understand that we are in District Five, which we compete competitively with two Monmouth Counties, Durham and Wake. As the safety blueprint goes, what I'd like to know is, is that how do we intend to get critical safety, intersections, lighting, different type of means of mitigation when we currently have almost impossible time getting basic mitigation in the, in the form of competitive standards that are set? In, in Granville County, Creedmore is the only municipality to my knowledge, Mr. Baker, you can correct me, within Campo. And so we, and that's, that's, and Campo is well aware of our frustration, but again, I think we have a lot of citizen input, but then we come back and we submit and they're moved down, then we may get a spot award down the road. And we also have, and also with District Five, that limits our ability with our RPO, our regional planning, with the CAR T RPO, because again, we're in the same trick bag competing against larger interstates, different type of motor trap, transportation, things of that nature. So I think from a Granville County perspective is we got, none of our recent ones got on the list to the recent STIP. And so again, we, we're fighting for it, so we'll be leaning heavily on our legislator to see what he can do to assist us further in that. But at the end of the day is that DOT is very, everything is devised by formulas and pretty much doesn't allow wiggle room outside of that. But there's really, when you're talking about a growing county, how do you, how do we ever going to get beyond that regards to our congestion, our, our safety issues if we're unable to
Okay, perfect. Again, very good question. One of the slides that I included in there that basically was addressed associated with the safety plan, but is involved in everything associated with metropolitan transportation planning is staying engaged. And that is being involved on the various committees that we have, whether internal community committees such as the local administrative project programming process, staying engaged with regard to other spot processes that we are involved in. And let me just point out, the key thing that's going to be important associated with the safety piece is getting the data and that's what's being processed right now. So what we're going to be doing is getting that data, we're going to be hearing from what Granville County basically informed us through the survey, we're going to get your input, not only your input from Granville County, but from all the other counties as well as Wake County, to determine the best way we can prioritize to get projects done. And, and that's, 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 that's very key. I know that there's frustration locally with regard to projects. It's also frustration even for the large cities for projects because there's only so much money for the scope of projects that need to be done and there's so much that needs to be done in our region, but.
No, thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure as part of an education process for the public to understand that, you know, it is a competitive process on a number of these projects, the LAP projects, the spot projects and things of that nature.
Yes.
And we, and we have good engagement and, but it's important they know that it's not for lack of effort, it is the fact that there's just not existing funding. And then when we, is funding, a larger municipality and/or county have the ability to, with a larger tax base, have the ability to, to put local funding with it. And then we're also limit that when you're, when you're competing against billion dollar budgets versus 90 million dollar budgets.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff.
Thank you very much. All right. And our next item is a presentation by yours truly and we're going to do this one out front and I'm going to call in some assistance. The first person I'm going to need is our most wonderful representative from the state of North Carolina, Frank Sossaman, who's done an awful lot for this region. And I would like to also have Commissioner Tony Kozart give me a hand too. If you would, please come forward to the podium and I'll join you up there in just
On second thought, Representative Sossman, if you'll come up to the stage and we'll do the presentation out, looking out instead of looking in to the board. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great honor to be here tonight. It's very nice to meet you.
Looks like a Kozart convention, doesn't it? It is a great honor of mine tonight as your representative to be here to recognize a man who's so deserving because of the great public service that he has offered throughout his Dr. Tony Wayne Kozart. He served 34 years in the public schools of North Carolina as a teacher, assistant principal, principal and director. His accomplishments would take us all night for me to read those, so I won't read those. I just want you to understand, he's been a trendsetter. He has made a difference. He's taken schools that were failing and brought them up to be, being successful. He served as kindergarten readiness coordinator for Franklin, Granville, Vance Smart Start. He currently serves as, as a director, executive director of Franklin, Granville, Vance Smart Start and he's done that since November 2016. And I've had the great privilege as a representative to work with him with childcare and many other issues. He serves as the pastor of Cooks Chapel Missionary Baptist Church and has done so since 2004. He served as Granville County Commissioner since 1989. You do the, you do the math and you'll find out that he's been around a long time sitting up here, hearing citizens. He serves on the Granville County Social Services Board, serves on the Franklin Vance Warren Board of Directors, serves on the Masonic Home for Children Board. He served as commissioner of the church basketball league at the Central Children's Home for many years, but he aged out. He couldn't keep up with it. I'm just adding. He served as moderator of the United Shallow Missionary Baptist Association, which includes 40 churches and he did that from 2019 to 2023. That is in itself is a challenge, not only pastoring one of the churches, but then trying to oversee the rest. He volunteered with Big Brother Program, known for being able to work cooperatively with individuals from varied backgrounds. And I understand that he gained that experience to deal with the diverse public as a bag boy at the 7-Eleven food store at 16 years of age. At least he gives that experience credit. Dr. Kozart, it is a distinct honor to present to you on behalf of Governor Roy Cooper and myself and the state of North Carolina, the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're welcome. You're welcome. I can, I consider you a great friend. I've admired you over the years. God bless you.
Thank you, Representative Sossman and to my fellow board members, to the staff. Thank you so much. I kept hearing a noise and at one point I thought it sounded like little Nate Nate, but I wasn't sure. And when I came in tonight, I saw my sister-in-law Patricia and her husband over there and I swear, maybe they just decided to come to a meeting tonight. I didn't think anything about it. But let me just say thanks to so many people, to all of my colleagues in particular. You've really become like family and the number of hours we spend working on issues has been a real joy to you, Representative Sossman, and all those we'll work with at the state level. I'm very grateful. Commissioner Smith, Ms. Nish, you know, it's been a pleasure. And I just feel so blessed that all these years of service, that being a county commissioner has never grown old. Every time it was time to run again, I never thought about, you know, not running. I just enjoy this too much and I really love this county. This is the county where I not only had a chance to be a bag boy at 7-Eleven, but I learned hard work in the tobacco fields of Granville County. And so working there to make sure it was a part of everyday life. So I'm so grateful for everyone who has poured into my life. I feel so blessed that I have wonderful parents who who nurtured me and taught me and to my siblings. I'm so grateful. My wife is here. God gave me a beautiful wife, went right down the road in Fairport, just right down the road a little ways. And he had a wife for me about three miles away. So to all of you, I'm so thankful and the grands are here, they just soul in my heart. Cooks Chapel, God bless you for just putting up with me for 20 years. To all of you, I'll stop talking now, but to God be the glory for the great things he's done.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much.
No, I was just standing and clapping, but. Good afternoon to everyone. I'm so very proud of my husband. Also, I just want to thank our family, our church family, everyone that came out tonight to celebrate him. It was so very hard to keep it a secret, I'm telling you. I had to hold my mouth sometimes, but I'm just very thankful and to God be the glory. Everything that he does, everything, he gives God the glory. So I say to God be the glory for all the things he has done.
Amen.
Dr. Chavis, they wouldn't be here without you. Please get up here. Please get up here.
Our first lady, you need to go to the middle a little. Yes, ma'am. All right. I can't see you, you can't see me. That mean we ain't seeing you, right? All right. Hey Chairman, you can get in there, sir? You got room? All right. Stop moving.
Okay, yeah. Somebody's phone. Somebody's left a phone here.
Oh, that's mine.
Is that yours? Okay.
We're just gonna take just a second. We're gonna send that nicely framed Order of the Long Leaf Pine. Minimum of thirty years' service required to even be considered for that. It's quite in and of itself, just to be considered for that award is amazing. All right, our next item for tonight is our public comment section of the meeting. As you come forward, if the speakers will please state their name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to complete your comments. If you have written comments and would like to submit them to the board, it's always appreciated. Okay. All right, so we're gonna have Catherine Crisp, our first speaker. You can come with you, Sheriff. And y'all are gonna take three minutes each? Or you wanna condense it? Six totally fine.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Crisp, and this is my sister, Crystal Crisp. I own the property that's on Tally Ho Road here in Granville County. And what I'm asking for the county to grant me is an easement, a non-exclusive access easement from my property to the end of Thackharry Road. This easement is essential to me to making full use of my property, which will allow me to have clear access to my property. My sister has done a map here showing, this is my property here. On the backside, it shows the connection from the railroad track where Thackharry Road is here on this side. Granville County, you all own that property. Let's see. And this easement stands like six hundred feet, give or take. And I'm also willing to pay for the survey cost, the cost of clearing the easement. And the will need to meet county, the county requirement is going to be around twenty feet width of that easement. And I also have another map. I don't see, don't know if you can see it from her property of where Thackharry is located. Do you all wanna copy of this? That way you have an idea? Or? Okay, all right. Did you wanna make any comments?
Um, yes, so we were just.
Thank you. We were just asking for access only because if you're able to see the smaller picture here towards the bottom, that's the driveway that we would like from Thackharry, which is about five hundred feet. But if we come on Haven Lane, which we come now, that's two thousand nine hundred and some feet for us to be able to have access to the property. And so, we were just requesting to see if we could get the partial piece, which is only around five hundred feet or so through the property that is owned by the county. Because the property that I have now, it does not front a state-maintained road, so this will give us a lot lesser route to the back of the property to get to my property. Is why we're asking for an easement on the backside of the property. So Haven Lane includes four or five other properties. They've expressed that they weren't able to help with the funds for it, and so we have a shorter route if we were able to come from Thackharry versus us trying to fix Haven Lane. Thank you. And then with that also, I'm also willing to pay for the cost of the expense of the easement on that backside and also to get it surveyed. And then to whatever meets the county standards as far as the width of that property, I'm also willing to do that also. And then I have copies if you all want those at the end of this. Okay, all right. That's all I have. That's all we have.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. We appreciate you giving public comment. If you will, pass those to the manager. And he'll make sure that we get everything. And then I very much appreciate you bringing the visual there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Mary. Mr. Baker. Is there something they need to do to ask the county for that? Is there something else they need to do? Oh, it's not planning?
It's not a planning question.
I tried.
So Attorney Brianna, the county manager, so they have given you what you need and you'll just get back and advise the board?
We were somewhat familiar with the request before. I took a look at it, but these additional materials are helpful, so we'll talk about it a little bit, follow up with the board for some further discussion.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to our sheriff matters. And first, we're gonna start out with a recognition of Deputy Sergeant Craig Williams. The sheriff, you'll come forward.
Sheriff Smith, could you join me please? If you don't mind. First, giving honor to God, to the commissioner, the chair. We just are blessed to be here and we're fortunate as we pray for the individuals out west. If you have not had an opportunity to lay your eyes on it, it's different than seeing it on television than seeing it in person. I'd like to thank you for what you're doing, the commissioners, ACIM, our local partners. We have taken a couple thousand pounds last week of supplies. We have a truckload going up on Wednesday, and we will continue to take supplies there as long as we can. We are about to house inmates from Buncombe County on Wednesday. We just purchased some mattresses, so we're gonna take in about twenty of their inmates. We have deputies working in Buncombe County now, and they will rotate out every week. We have approximately five or canine officers up there. We're gonna rotate out to help our partners, because it could have been us. It could have been us in the same situation, because we're gonna extend that process out. But the reason that we're here, for far too long, that Granville County Sheriff's Office has had staff that bore the brunt of a lot of stuff. And we had people stick through this process, through thinking that, through everything that went on with our sheriff's office. So today, we honor Craig Williams, if you would join me, and Lieutenant Wilkins, if you would come down. And I wanted Sheriff Smith to be here because we raise these young men in this business as our family. And I think it's only fitting for Sheriff, excuse me, Sheriff Smith to be here in this time. So Lieutenant, Sheriff, I got two blacks, you both get one to present to this man. I'll present his credentials to him after that, if y'all don't mind. All right. You want the big one or small one, Sheriff?
You go first. Didn't know I was gonna be doing this, but anyway, I'm here, so we're thankful, first of all. Dr. Kozart, thank you for your service and much deserved recognition tonight. Thank you for you and your love of all these years. I guess I need to do this because I actually hired Craig many, many years ago. It's been so long, whether it been twenty-six years, hasn't it, Craig? Twenty-six years, a long time ago. Craig was a lot younger and I was a lot younger, but Craig did a great job. He advanced through the ranks and got into investigations, and he has done a tremendous job for not only the sheriff's office, but also the people of Granville County. And I understand he's gonna still continue to serve a little bit part-time. So Craig, with this, I'm gonna present this to you on behalf of Sheriff Fountain for your legacy of twenty-six years of service for the people of the sheriff's office in Granville County and much deserved, and we wish you all the best in your semi-retirement.
And I've just got a couple words I would like to share, if it's okay. I'm gonna try not to get emotional. I got a little choked up the other day, so, but like Sheriff Smith said, myself and Craig, we've worked together a long time. And I'm truly honored to be here tonight to present Craig, Sergeant Craig Williams, with his achievement award on behalf of the Granville County Sheriff's Office. Craig began his law enforcement career in 1998, and his entire career has been with the sheriff's office, which in itself speaks volumes of his commitment and dedication. I've had the pleasure to work with Craig in Patrol Division, Criminal Investigation Division, and served together as supervisors during his twenty-six-year law enforcement career. Craig also currently serves as the police chief in the town of Stovall and has for several years, and he is an active member of Granville County Crime Stoppers. Craig, on behalf of the sheriff's office, I want to personally thank you for your professionalism, your leadership, and for mentoring other officers who have chosen law enforcement as a profession over the years. I can say without hesitation that you have impacted the lives of officers and other individuals that you have interacted with throughout your career. I would also like to say thank you to Craig's family and friends for their support of him during this career. A strong support system is essential in all professions, but especially in the career of law enforcement. Thank you for understanding the stress and unpredictable hours associated with the job, for missed holidays, missed birthdays, and other family functions that were missed due to the call of duty. In closing, Sergeant Williams has dedicated twenty-six-plus years of his life unselfishly to the citizens of Granville County and to the sheriff's office. Because of his professionalism, commitment, dedication, and work ethic during his career, Sergeant Craig Williams has made Granville County a better place. We at the sheriff's office would like to congratulate you on reaching this milestone in life and wish you well in the next chapter of your life. You will always be our brother in blue, and Granville County Sheriff's Office will always be your home. So at this time, I would like to present this award to Craig. This is presented with deep appreciation and recognition Sergeant Craig Williams for his outstanding twenty-six years of service from 1998 to 2024 with the Granville County Sheriff's Office. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to protect and to serve in our community. Your dedication and sacrifices have made a lasting impact. On your next chapter of your life, may God's blessings be upon you as you follow in his way, and may you find joy and peace as he inspires you daily. From Sheriff Robert Fountain Jr. and the staff of the Granville County Sheriff's Office.
Before I let him go, I got to give him his new badge. I took his sergeant badge the last week. I took his sergeant badge, but we gotta present him with his deputy sheriff's badge, because he's gonna stay with us. His leadership, his knowledge, his education about what he does, his leadership, not just for the deputies, just for me. Because he would come to me and be, hey Sheriff, we might look at this thing a different way. Because when you get too big to think you can't learn from somebody, then you're the ignorant person in the room. So that's what I tell them. I learn from everything that they bring to the table and they bring to me. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Get out the plate. So real quick. So last Tuesday was my last day, and honestly, I don't think I have any more tears to shed. I've given over twenty-six years of my life in law enforcement. I gotta thank God for allowing me to enter into this profession and to reach my goal safely. I gotta thank my mom for raising me up the right way, teaching me from right and from wrong early on. David T. Smith, thank you. You saw something in me years ago, twenty-six years ago, you saw something in me. You gave me an opportunity to start my career in law enforcement, and I'll forever be grateful to you. All the other sheriffs in between, thank you for allowing me to continue my journey on. Sheriff Fountain, thank you for, when you came into office, allowing me to stay on and to serve and to reach this point in my life, in my career. To all my fellow officers, past and present, men and women in blue, thank you for serving alongside me and for always being there, having my back. Granville County will always have a special place in my heart, and I'll love everybody that I ever served with. Thank you.
Sergeant Williams. Sergeant, before you go, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the citizens of Stovall for what you've been doing and what you will continue to do. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Craig, I'd like to say thank you for everything, and I appreciate you for everything that you have done. Many times I called you. Got my answers and solved my problem. And tell your mama she can have her baby back now. Thank you. I appreciate that. Hey, listen, real quick, if I may, I just have two requests from you all. I've retired. It won't affect me, but will you all really take a strong look at allowing employees to use their sick time towards their retirement to get their health insurance? And also, second thing, take a stronger look at when employees retire, like me, passing on healthcare costs to the retirees, the new healthcare costs. So, thank you.
All right. While we've got you here, Sheriff, we've got one more item that pertains to you. It is an approval of the Aramark Contract Amendment. It's a two-year contract extension from Aramark Meal Service at the Granville County Detention Center. This is a walk-in that we've got for you all. This is a walk-in that we've got for you all at your, your place. Do you have anything else you want to say about the, and I, your mic has been cut off, I'm sorry. You got anything else you'd like to say about this contract?
Uh, thanks again, Mr. Chair. Um, what we did, we sent all the stuff through the proper channels, make sure that Jim was on board with it. Make sure that Drew and Aramark had a conversation. The only thing we did was we did not enter into a long-term agreement. They wanted three years, we said no. I think Jim went through the process to get it to where we can do a two-year contract with them. Because I don't want to extend any things long-term within any of the people that provide for us. Because future goals is going to be to have one-stop shop where all of our stuff is in one place. So I appreciate Drew, Jim, and Jim, I'm sorry for the loss of your father. And we just want to make sure that this contract was straight and uh, Aramark is doing what we need right now. Um, but I just don't want to hamstring us into something long-term.
Alright, are there any questions uh, on this contract extension from the board?
I'd just like to ask the county attorney, county attorney, if you looked this over and does everything look in order?
Assuming the piece of paper laying in front of me is the same one I looked at, it's fine. Yeah, we looked at it and it appears to be the same.
That being the case, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept this two-year contract having the approval of our county attorney.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner, uh, Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Jay to accept the recommendation from our sheriff as well as authorize the county manager to execute the contract once finalized by the county attorney. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you Sheriff.
One last thing, um, the sixteenth, I think that's a Friday. The Stovall seniors are having a fun day. And I got my arm twisted by Ms. Jean Lawson and I gotta cook for everybody in Stovall and all the senior centers. So the senior centers from down south, Oxford and Stovall are having a community day. They're supposed to be getting the park. So the sheriff's office will be up there cooking, um, for the seniors and uh, they wanted me to extend that invitation to the commissioners to come and join them. Thank you.
Next, we're gonna have Mr. Barry Baker uh, come forward and this is around the adoption of the East Coast Greenway Study. Mr. Baker, I want you to turn your mic on, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is a request to consider adoption of the East Coast Greenway feasibility study that was funded by the North Carolina Department of Transportation and prepared by their consultant, Alta. The purpose of the East Coast feasibility study was uh, to explore future options for the approximate seventeen miles of continuous paved trail running from downtown Oxford to the Virginia State Line and eventually connecting both north and south as part of the East Coast Greenway. To give a backdrop about what the East Coast Greenway is, it's a, it's a, is a vision that there will be a trail that connects all the way from Maine to Florida. Greenway committees in Granville County have been talking about this, uh, being part of that for many years. Want to state that the Parks, Recreation and Greenway Committee did uh, recommend approval of this feasibility study to y'all in August. The vision of the proposed trail is that it will be a tourism destination and catalyst for economic development. Connect the region's lakes, Car Lake, Falls Lake, and communities as part of the East Coast Greenway. That again will run uh, from Maine to uh, to Florida. This is again, the, the component, the segment from downtown Oxford to the Virginia State Line. It would possibly connect with uh, a proposed trail, a recommended trail on Belltown Road, go past the Gap, through STEM and Butler that was approved uh, two years ago, and then go on into Durham County. And the trail will offer area residents a great opportunity for recreation while also providing a safe walking and bicycling route for everyday trips. The goals of the proposed trail, develop a destination greenway and linear park that connects attractions, draws locals and tourists, and spurs economic growth within the county. Attract economic investments and connect business destinations to the Greenway Corridor to ensure economic growth. Become a major walkable and bike-friendly corridor that connects schools, parks, and commercial centers. Highlight and honor the local rural history of Granville County and reduce automobile dependency and improve walkability and bikeability for providing a safe off-road transportation facility. The study began in the summer of twenty-three. It was guided by a steering committee representing a, a range of perspectives that included the DOT, Granville County, City of Oxford, Town of Butler, the Car-Tar Council of Governments, Tar River Land Conservancy, and citizen representatives. And after a robust public participation process, they presented to the steering committee this feasibility study. And again, the feasibility study has been recommended by your Parks, Recreation, and Greenway Committee. There were three main alternatives that were selected and examined for opportunities and constraints and are shown on the map. The rail corridor, which is the Norfolk Southern Rail Corridor. The US fifteen side path, which would parallel US fifteen going north of Virginia. And a rural roadway, a scenic route that would go and uh, through uh, some areas of the county along the secondary roads and some private property. The preferred trail route after the robust public participation process was uh, the rail trail alternative following the Norfolk Southern Railroad. Trails are phased, as you, you, you know that uh, again, the vision of a, of a East Coast Greenway from Maine to Florida is gonna take time. Long trails are typically built in phases. The acquisition of the rail corridor from Norfolk Southern will be a multi-year process. During this process, during the feasibility study, we uh, met and had come and make presentation to us, a, a group that uh, that helped Roxborough, Person County, Durham City, and Durham County get a similar project, a, a, a trail along five oh one that will connect, uh, that will connect Roxborough to Durham in the next several years. It is proposed that the construction of the trail be completed in four phases. The catalyst project is a Lake Devon Trail connection that would uh, connect downtown Oxford to Lake Devon. Phase one would be the Oxford Rail Trail, which would connect to this Lake Devon Trail and follow uh, the railroad that would ultimately go up fifteen. Then in ox, phase two would be Oxford to Stovall and then Stovall to Virginia. The feasibility study has a quite detailed engineering design, which I think, and when you look at plans and studies, you don't always find, uh, it is very detailed. It identified potential federal, state, and private funding sources and provided cost estimates for the various alternatives. And adoption of the study, as the county pursues grant funding, will be looked upon favorably by those outside's funding sources. Not asking for any funding tonight. This is a, is a plan. Most of the funding in the years to come will be from outside grant sources. There will be matches, um, but uh, this funding will occur in the future will be from out, majority of it will be from outside funding sources. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Baker, a couple of quick questions. Uh, is Norfolk Southern giving this property or they?
It would, it would, Commissioner, it would have to be uh, purchased. Uh, this group of folks that um, that helped Roxborough, City of Durham, Durham County, and Person County could be the conduit in that discussion. What we were told is that, um, you know, when there's a serious offer at some point in the future, uh, they'd be willing to listen.
Norfolk Southern would be willing to listen, okay. People, property owners that have, have to access across the rail line to get to their property. How is that gonna affect?
It, it wouldn't have an effect in that uh, we wouldn't disrupt that existing driveway. It would be a, a, a trail that uh, they could use, um, in the rural areas is likely to be
Right.
used by bicyclists.
Okay.
Uh, except around the lake and whatnot where it's more pedestrian. And the city, it would be pedestrian and bicycle.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so after the study that is done, so there's no funding needed for the study? Once the study is completed, will we then know or have a better gauge on what the matching funds for grants might be at that point?
Oh yes, sir. I mean, um, any, any funding that we would seek would come to y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Do you have any guarantees they're gonna connect the north to the south?
There's no guarantee, um, but uh, it is a plan. It's a roadmap or a trail map. It is quite a effort to get trails connect all the way from Maine to Florida. There's been a lot of discussion over the years in the Greenway Committees. We're actively communicating with the East Coast Greenway Representative for State of North Carolina. They're excited. They, they want it to happen. You know, it, it takes time, right-of-way acquisition, easement acquisition. You know, this isn't something that happens overnight, but this is, this will help us get there and folks in the future get there.
What is the, um, what are we looking at potentially in matching funds?
Generally twenty percent. Or generally what grant funding would be, some of this would occur, would uh, be uh, these grant funds uh, would be shared by the cities.
I was gonna ask you, is the county, is this county only matching funds?
No, sir. It, uh, the one in Oxford, uh, over time would be uh, be, the catalyst would be uh, Oxford and then they may come and ask us, ask y'all to help.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baker, are they, are they planning on using that railroad tracks from STEM?
My understanding is that, no.
Okay.
Is it, if, the uh, the trail between Oxford and uh, Butler would generally follow along uh, roads, Belltown, past the Gap.
Only, only tracks they're looking at is through Oxford to Stovall, right?
That, that's correct at this time. Yes, sir. Again, this is, it's all a plan that's subject to change as time goes on and it becomes, you know, a connection might be better in one place than another, but it is all a plan. It's all projected. It's just, um, it's a plan, a trail way to hopefully get the East Coast Greenway in Granville County that everyone has talked about for many years.
Excuse me, Mr. Jay, if you, if you, may I?
Go ahead.
How long has this been a concept and how long is it anticipated that it, if, if everything worked the way the planners wish it would work? Would, would this come to fruition?
The first might be three, four, five years, all the way to Virginia, maybe two decades or more.
Any other questions? Okay, you've heard the presentation by uh, Mr. Baker. And again, this comes with the recommendation from the Parks, Recreation, and Greenways Committee to adopt this Greenways Master Plan. So feasibility study, excuse me.
We just stopped in the study, right?
Yes. Stopped in there, I, I misspoke.
So you need a motion to, to, to go along with the study, or to, I'll make that motion.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Hinman, seconded by Commissioner Cozart to uh, adopt the, or, or excuse me, approve the East Coast Greenway feasibility study from Oxford to Virginia. Are, are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next, we're gonna have our emergency management matters and we've got Mr. Jason Rivas coming forward here. Jason, thank you so much for the work you've done over the last few weeks. I know it certainly has been exhausting both mentally and physically for you going out to the mountains and um, helping out with those folks, but we really, we really thank you.
Yeah, thank you Sheriff, fellow Commissioners. I was, it's a very humbling experience going out there and seeing it firsthand. You know, through the eyes of others, bringing in pictures and just getting out in the communities and see exactly how much devastation is out there. It's totally different going to a deployment for hurricane to the coast on flatland versus the mountains. It's two totally different beasts and provided a whole lot of challenges. So the storm in western North Carolina is actually a great tie-in with this. Some of the things we've learned, equipment, 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 this needed. And stuff we've learned, if you have it, you get the resources, you have the resources in your county to where you can go ahead and start the process of response and eventually get into recovery. So the two things, the first one I'm coming before you tonight is the purchase of, prove the purchase of a laundry trailer using CBCG funds. So this started back several years ago when the state appropriated, uh, we started with three million dollars for the first year and then next year appropriated another five million dollars, which was intended to be just a two-year grant. And state, and this past year, they, the legislatures decided they were going to allot another one point nine million dollars in funding for this program. That being said, That being said, we applied and were awarded $115,000 to go towards the purchase of a laundry trailer. This laundry trailer will be eight complete units, eight washers, eight dryers. It will help with responders coming in to help us, but it also will help if we need to provide laundry services to the citizens. And like I said, in western North Carolina, that's the problem we're having, a lot of these communities don't have water, so we'd be able to hook this up to portable tanks, bring them in, run it and provide this service. We contacted multiple vendors, got four quotes, however, two of the quotes didn't have onboard generators. And as we see now, generators are in very short supply and it's hard to get them. So that was one of the requirements that we wanted on this trailer from the get-go. So lowest vendor come in at a total of $109,377.80, which was Pro Pack. We've dealt with them before in service of various other projects and has been a very good company to work with. This is a no-match grant and we already have a MOA in hand if y'all decide to approve this. My recommendation would be to purchase this laundry trailer from Pro Pack Incorporated for a price not to exceed $115,000. And if you have any questions.
I do, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Is the generator included or not included?
The generator in this one is included.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood that. And what size generator is it?
I believe this one's going to be, I think they said a seven KW would run it.
Propane or diesel?
This one will be propane, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And this, this generator is sized that it will accommodate all the dryers and washers running at one time?
Yes, because the, the dryers will be propane, so it will not require as much electricity as a typical dryer.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have the recommendation before you. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Okay, we got a commissioner, a motion by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Jay. Any questions on the motion?
And, and I, again, you said that there would not come any funds out of our, the county money, it's already grants.
This is a no-match reimbursable grant.
If, if we were to take this in a situation like what's going on in western North Carolina now and we loan this, would we actually send someone with this to?
So these would, this would be available just because of a lot of these grants, they put that stipulation in to make it available to other counties. So yes, we typically take it there and we'll train them on it so they know how to use it and then we'll leave it there with them.
And then when they're done, we pick it up?
Yes, sir. Same thing, it's like we got several pieces of equipment out right now in western North Carolina, generator, light tower and our cash trailer for our companion animals.
Okay, we've got a motion. We had the discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, the second unit I have is also as additional no-match reimbursement grant. It is to approve the purchase of a HVA, a portable HVAC unit. This was part of a 2023 local emergency shelter grant program that was funded through state appropriations. Same thing with this one, like prime example with this one, on my deployment this past week, it's hot when you go to bed. I mean, when you're sleeping in a warehouse with open doors with five to six hundred of your best friends that you just learned about. It's nice and warm at night, wake up in the morning, it's mountain cold, 55-degree mornings, it's cold. So this purpose of this is to use in event of a shelter losing power, we can bring this, hook it up, we can either warm a shelter or cool it down. We were awarded in this grant a total of $62,600 for the purchase of this unit. It is trailer-mounted and same thing as before, we would take it to assist other counties as needed, but it also can be used as other, for other things in county as well. So I would recommend the purchase of this 25-ton HVAC, portable HVAC, HVAC unit from TRS SC, SCO LLC in the amount of 62,000. And again, we reached out and had a minimum of three vendors put in quotes and this company was the lowest bid.
Have you had any dealings with this company before, Jason?
I have not with this company. I've, none of the companies have applied. I've never had any dealings with, I've had dealings with these units, but the ones that I've had dealings with were ones that they got like a local HVAC person to put together. And it just didn't seem as quality as what I've seen and did my research on this one.
All right, Commissioners, you have the recommendation before you. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the recommendation coming from Emergency Management.
Got a motion by Commissioner Jay, seconded by Commissioner Gooch to approve the recommendation coming from our Emergency Management Director for the purchase of this HVAC unit for the amount not to exceed $62,600. All those in favor, oh, excuse me, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank Jason, County Manager. I can't, I'd love to see County Manager some type of bullet with all the different pieces of Emergency Management, which equipment we've gotten over the last three, three to five years on no fun, no matching grant funds. Jason, thank you for doing that work and you positioned our county in a very good place should we have an event, but I want, I think the whole board recognizes your efforts on that.
Okay, next we'll be hearing from our Environmental Services Director, Mr. Jason Falls. The purpose of this is to approve a one-year GFL contract extension for the convenience site operations and the curbside waste collection franchise agreement. Good evening, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. The background of this, this request is the county manager and the Director of Environmental Programs met with the Solid Waste Subcommittee to discuss the granting of a one-year extension to GFL for both the convenience site operations and the curbside waste collection franchise agreements. Discussion items included complaints received since the initial award in January 2020, the history of staff's attendant pay, as well as some service volumes during this time of this contract. During the contract, I have received relatively few complaints regarding service for these contracts. Most, if not all complaints were filed by, by the contractor and resolved. It's also important to note, GFL has not passed on any increased costs to its franchise curbside customers in response to the county, to the county increasing their tipping fee significantly within the last two years. Furthermore, the general manager has assured me upon award of the extension, the county, the company will continue to honor the 3.5% CPA increase per agreement effective January 1st, 2025. Compliance with the contract and purchasing policy, the, um, the existing contract allows for two one-year extensions. This request is for the first one-year extension. Funding line item, funding is available fiscal year 24, 25. All purchase orders have been approved for the expenditures of these, of these two contracts. It is, it is my recommendation that we, we go ahead with this one-year extension for both agreements based on information already discussed. The extension will become effective on January 1st, 2025 and end on December 31st, 2025. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Has the county attorney looked at the contract and are you okay with that?
I looked at the original one, I assume we will draft the amendment. We haven't done that yet, as I recall, have we?
No, has not.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll draft the amendment, it'll be a simple, just amendment showing that the renewal term was exercised.
I'll make a motion that we accept based on the county attorney's looking at the contract, I'll, environmental, accept the contract.
I second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Cozart to accept the recommendation of our Environmental Services Director, Jason Falls, and then with the execution by the manager and a review of the attorney. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I do. So, Jason, Mr. Falls, I apologize. Did we get assurances from them that they're going to do everything they can to keep those summer complaints that we got within my district to a minimum or cease?
Yeah.
And then one, one, one last question along that lines, because I know that was an unusual complaint, complaints. The compactor was down for five, six months. And, and so there was something in the contract that did not allow us to kind of make an adjustment for a supply chain issue. So I just want to know, that was a long time for that compactor to be down and, and frankly, I don't recall a sense of super urgency on their part. So I'm, you know, although I know that we don't have a lot of vendors pursuing this contract, a contract like this, I would like to know that we place some things in the contract that would place us in a better position when we have issues, particularly when it comes to the compactor and to, to better, be in a better position to, to address it. If you recall, County Manager, County Attorney, we had a compactor go bad at the Wilton site. It was down for at least, I don't want to exaggerate, three, four months or so. It caused real dishevel in, in, in that, for that convenience center. And then, so I think I actually asked what was, what we're going about it and it took the county attorney's involvement to actually get the ball rolling, which was very disappointing. That's, that's what I'm asking, is that there be something resolved with that?
They have ordered backup equipment and they have supposedly have that on-site for, for a compactors, for that compactor to come back down, but they have ordered a backup unit to be installed if, if that one goes down.
And I, and I would love to take credit for, so I said I would love to take credit for solving that problem, but I just happened to contact them right as a unit they had ordered came in, as I recall, so. I thought you had some involvement, but again, it should have never came, it should have never actually came to the attorney calling. And so that's my concern is that, you know, I don't want us to be in a position to where we're, we're scrambling. So I don't know what the alternative is other than making sure that we have language in there that deals with that and that we've got assurance that they have some type of backup available and that we're not waiting that period of time within the contract so that we don't go scrambling.
I believe we have that language in the contract and this doesn't really present an opportunity unless we have further discussions to renegotiate the contract because it's just an extension of the current contract. The reason for that problem, and Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was a supply chain issue at the time during COVID and after, I felt reasonably confident after talking to the attorney that they were acting good, good faith on that. It certainly took longer than we would have wanted, but it was consistent with other supply chain issues we were seeing from mechanical equipment during that time period.
This is in 2023.
Well.
And that COVID, COVID, I mean.
We're still experiencing some, some issues.
I'm just going to disagree with the county attorney, appreciate your comments there, but I, I mean, I just, is there nothing in the contract that can hold them, that can ensure that they're going to have a unit or the means to repair within a period of time?
I believe it's in there, we'll just have to take more aggressive legal action early on and not take the word for what they're doing, I guess.
I think it's gotten their attention. The general manager was in the hole in the final days installing that, so, and he did tell me he was going to order some backup equipment for any, they know the sincerity of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, only thing, if I may, nothing contractual here, I think a couple of workers who, you know, they work sometimes long hours and they didn't know if maybe some provision could be made for them to have some type of portable hand washing capacity since they eat a snack or something like that, but just a thought to share. Thank you, Ms. Falls.
Jason, I just got one question next. I, I think, I can't imagine, but you can find out, but do they give you, if they're going to have some changes or stuff, do they even contact you before they, uh, write stuff out into the community?
To be honest, they're not the best communicators on some things. Any major, any major news is, is sent to me, but there are some times that the communication's not, it could be a lot better. But I got your note from Drew about what I think you're referring to and I'll look into that.
I was at, I was at church yesterday when I got the, when they read, read it out, everybody turned around and looked at me, I, I don't know. I couldn't give a answer.
We'll look into it, get back with you tomorrow.
I'll shut up after this comment, I just, I just want to be certain that there's some, that there is something that, that makes sure that there, Mr. Ren, you feel pretty, you're confident that if we have a compactor go, go down, that there's, there's something in the contract that will assure that they have it repaired and backup running within a reasonable amount of time, not, not four to five months.
The contract, I'll have to go back and look, but my recollection is that there wasn't a contract issue, it was a getting the equipment issue. And again, it requires that they provide the service and have all necessary equipment. Like with most legal things, it doesn't provide an immediate, even if the contract provides it, the system doesn't provide an immediate way to solve a problem. I can't, I can't promise that if they don't do what they're supposed to, that they're going to have something there. And again, with, with this issue, whether we, we didn't sue them, so we didn't get discovery to verify whether they were telling the truth or not, but what they, what, what was represented to us is.
Had to cost more than repairing a machine.
What's that?
Had to cost more than repairing a machine.
Well, they just couldn't get the, you know, what they swore to us is they couldn't get the part and they were trying as hard as.
Yeah, it was an older, older piece of equipment and they just said they had trouble finding that part and finally found a part and far away, but.
All right, Commissioners, we've got a question on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falls. The next item we've got on our agenda is appointments for an advisory board. That's the Cartar Private Industry Council Workforce Development Board. And I believe Commissioner Wilford is our representative on said board?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I do not have anybody at this time. I'll make the recommendation.
Sorry, I'm speaking ahead, my mic off the whole time there. We've got a motion to appoint at the recommendation of Lou Guerilla Workforce Development Director, Laura Holden, and the motion was made by Commissioner Wilford and is seconded by Commissioner Jay, the ex-L-Tech employee. All those in, any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. Any opposed? Like sign. And the motion carries. All right, our next item is the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner May stole a little bit of my thunder, but I also wanted to appreciate Emergency Management Director Rivas for, for both his service out in Mitchell County? McDowell. McDowell County. We've also had some, some things going on in Mitchell County, but, and making sure that the small but mighty emergency management department does make sure that they take advantage of all these grant opportunities. It really has enabled us to be much better prepared than we would otherwise be, honestly, for a disaster that we hope won't come. But as, as has just been demonstrated, you know, you never know what may be around the corner for you. So, thank you to Jason. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Attorney?
I have a matter for close session for economic development and attorney-client privilege.
Okay, and we'll take that actually, obviously at the end for the closed session.
And I would also like to take the opportunity to thank everyone who attended my dad's funeral yesterday. It meant a lot for me to have all of you there, and I appreciate it.
Round robin, we'll start with Commissioner Rob Wilford. Mr. Your remarks?
I too would just like to, I was very proud of our county. I was watching the news this morning. It was the National News Channel. They were interviewing a commissioner, county commissioner from one of the counties. I didn't catch it. Watuga, Yancey, but she thanked several counties for sending help. We were not one of them, but I knew that we had been sending help. I was very proud of the fact that not just our county people, but the response of the churches, the volunteer fire departments, the, the local fire departments for putting trucks together. I think they, they've had one every other day going out. I know a lot of the local churches are raising funds. They're packing them with necessary supplies and sending them up to the areas that are hit. And I'm just very proud of our county for taking an active part and for the citizens, Jason, your staff, and, and just those that have gone up there. We've got people, Scott Phillips has got a daughter that lives there, and we can't imagine the destruction. As Scott says, seeing it on TV doesn't do it justice. So I was very proud of our county. I too just like to, my condolences to Jim Ren and his family. I knew his father for a long time, good man. He spoke his mind. That's an understatement. And Jim, you did a very nice job in your words yesterday about it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. And I'm sorry, to Mr. Longleaf Pine, congratulations, very well deserved. Tony was behind me in high school a little bit, and he's the only person I know. They said, how long has he been a county commissioner? I said, just look when he graduated from high school, and, and it's the next year, and he's been one ever since then. So very deserving, great person, great man, done a lot for this county. Thank you, Tony. That's all, I promise.
Okay, Commissioner Hibbin?
Thank you, sir. It's been a very busy couple of weeks. I was able to go to the Boys and Girls Club breakfast for their, to show off their new part of their building, and I was very, very impressed with that new portion of the building. It really is awesome. I was also able to go to the open house for the ABC store. I learned a lot about the ABC store and then how much money actually comes back to the county that they make. And, and, and I'm very impressed that, that what they're able to do with the money they get and how much they're able to turn back to us to help out with that. I was also able to go to the Cooperative Extension Volunteer Banquet, and, you know, all these young people that, that, that we deal with, you know, with 4H and all the other programs that they go through, through the extension office, it's just awesome to see all the volunteers willing and capable of helping out. That room was packed again this year. Thank God it was not as cold, but it was packed again this year, and it was awesome. I was also able to attend the library boards lunch that they provided for the employees to thank them for everything they've done, and, and that's also very important to me because that, that's something I've been involved with since high school. So thank you very much. And the Cartar cog banquet, as always, that's, it's a pleasure to get to see the people that got awards such as Commissioner May, that got an awesome award this year, and so thank you very much for being there and for being, getting that award. That was very impressive. And again, Mr. Longleaf Pine, you know, it was hard because he did recognize those babies, you know, voices out there. And he kept goes, is there a meeting going on next door? And I said, yes, and they must have children go in there. Trying to make him not realize it was his grandchildren out there because I knew who's those, those babies' voices were too. So thank you for everything you do to get that award. You, you did an awesome job. But that's all I've done the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have enjoyed all the events, the ABC store, the dedication and being up in Stowall for the senior center and all those things. You know, natural disasters, I was, I've been looking at some pictures and, you know, as much as these things are devastating, to see the age of some of the people who are helping to bring relief, whether it's packing boxes or preparing to send materials and so forth, it really is gratifying to see what it means and what it says about us as a people to come together like that, be concerned, you know, not whether or not someone in your family is benefiting, but someone in mankind is going to benefit. Just been awesome to see. I do want to ask if we could be supportive of our, our school board is ready to make some bold moves, I think, and something this board has been talking about. And obviously, it's, you know, it's not going to meet with everybody's approval. We know that. But it also may be an opportunity as there be some buildings perhaps that will, maybe could meet some other needs that we might have. So as we watch that process roll out, I do want to commend the leadership of our school system for moving forward with whatever consolidation they end up landing with. And hopefully, we'll be able to maybe have some additional space. And all I can say to y'all tonight, just thank you, is thank you, and I'm just filled with gratitude. I appreciate everything so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to thank the county employees and county manager for what you do. I mean, I always agree with your assessments, but I know you work hard. And Jason, I want to let you know that I know that you worked on those complaints very hard, so even though I voted no, I want you to know that I do appreciate your efforts. The devastation out, out west is just incredible, and so just we do everything we can to continue to support it. Thank you, board, for giving the county manager the liberty to do that. Jason, thank you for going out there. Dr. Kozart, congratulations. Well deserved. Incredible legacy, and appreciate you. The school, schools do have some difficult decisions when you have efficiency rates in the forties. And I'm talking about number of students and the population of students has not grown over the period of time. And the cost of keeping those schools going and the staffing and everything intertwined. And so they have tough decisions to make. And so I intend to support their decisions. I hope this board will support their decisions. This is not an easy task for them to take on because it, it impacts everyone's favorite thing, their, their, their best treasure, their children. And so, but I do believe whatever they do will be in the best interest of children and the best interest of the education process and in keeping with the efficiency and effectiveness of how the tax dollars are spent on education. You know, this board, we talked about SROs in schools. I keep hearing it. I'll continue to hear it, and we'll keep, continue to hear it. I know the sheriff has, I think, most of all the schools covered except for Cradle and West Oxford, and I think he has those schools split. Again, I'm hoping that the city of Oxford will, will step up and do similar to what some other municipalities have done. I also hope to have a meeting here very soon with the, with, with Representative Sossman along with the, the director of Safe Schools to ensure that Graham County is, gets equitable treatment when it comes to funding for SROs. It's imperative that, that occur. We only got 2.5 positions when, when Alining County's got many more. And that's just, that does, there's no formula you can show me or demonstrate to me that tells me that, that's equitable. So we fought very hard. Then we're going to continue to fight. But there was a decision for our board to make too. Finally, Mr. Ren, just deepest condolences to you and your family, loss of your father. And reading his obituary, he seemed to be just an incredible man, very, as you said, unique in his own way. And so our prayers will continue for you and your family. Thank you. Okay. First off, congratulations, Dr. Kozart. Well deserved. No, it's Lotus is next. I didn't get out of line. Not yet. I was going by the page. Oh, sorry. Anyway. Congratulations, Dr. Kozart. Well deserved. You've been a tremendous, you've had a tremendous career. You've got many more years to go. You've been a stabilizing force on the board of commissioners for thirty-five years, and thank you for your service. Thank you for all that, all that you do. Thinking about the school board, they've got some tough decisions to make. We, we experienced an increase in population, but if you look at the numbers for the Graham County Public Schools, the enrollment has steadily decreased over the past fifteen years or so. So it's been a, it, they continue to struggle. On a brighter note, I want to, again, welcome Lindsay Davison and Jessica Todd. Thank you both for joining the county. Hope you have a long, happy career here. We look forward to working with both of you. And Jason, thank you for all you do, and thank you for hearing me out with what sometimes seems like weekly calls about the button of convenience center. But, you know, we're, we're kind of in a position where you, you have to work with what you got because you put out requests for proposals and you get one. So you don't have a lot of choice. Sometimes we have to deal and work with the, with the contract that we have. Jason Rivas, thank you, and, and your staff, and all that emergency services does. And thank you for the work you're doing in western North Carolina. Also like to thank Sheriff Fountain and the Sheriff's Department for the work they're doing. We have a lot of people in the community that are volunteering on their own. We have a lot of churches that are collecting goods, and it's just great to see our, our county, our communities within our counties all, all come together. And Jim, I'm sorry about your dad. Would love to live my life the way he lived his.
Most of us would.
Yeah, I, I think I would retire a happy man if I said I lived all my life just like I wanted to. But thank you. Thank you, Drew, and all the county staff. We appreciate you, everything you do. Barry, thank you for your presentation, and with the community, with the trails deal, you said two decades? A lot of us might not be around two decades from now when it gets built. So, you know, I'm thinking back to myself. I just turned seventy, so. Two decades puts me at ninety. But if I'm around, I do qualify for the nifty nineties celebration with the senior citizens, senior services department. So maybe I got that to look forward to. I don't know, but thank you all. Have a good night.
I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Wilford in the suit said about, like, other week here. We had, we had a busy week, couple of weeks. Congratulations to, to Russ. And congratulations to Tony. Oh, who you said? A farmer? How, how you had, my first, my first head, you mentioned, thank you for that. There you go. And I'm trying to figure out who in the world was that. Thank you, thank y'all for y'all's service and whatever, what all that y'all do for, for the county. Also, just like to say thanks to, I, each, I'm not going to call no names, but thank for each and everyone that stepped up to the plate and come together. Our Graham County is a heartfelt county, a loving county. People step, when they see things happen, we come together, step up to the plate and knock a home run. Y'all are great. Y'all are wonderful. We appreciate all the service that y'all do. I mean, I've seen so many trucks and people's bringing different stuff, water and all kinds of stuff, low knee trucks up, can to the, can to other, to out west. Because we know in Graham County, we don't live in a glass house. We don't know when it might lie, lie coming and happen to us, and we need help. Thank y'all for doing that. I appreciate you. I love each and every one here in Graham County. Love Graham County. Born and raised here in Graham County, gonna stay here in Graham County, da, da. We had our health department meeting last week. I'd just like to thank Scott for all, for all he have done helping us with the water situation out there at the health department and, and, and getting, getting us back on the track. And we've been having some, have been having problems with some water, with pipes and stuff, out there, out there at the health department. And we just said, thank you, Scott, for doing that. And, and all the effort, and also just like to say too, when you see that our people's at our health department, thank them. But you know that during COVID, all them getting COVID shots and doing everything, we still they still held on to all those diseases that we have to report to the, to the state daily. They still worked it. And we appreciate our health department, our nurses and, and doctors and everything at their health department. And also just like to say, again, thanks all for coming up to the cog banquet, and we appreciate y'all for coming. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, commissioners. That's a whole lot to repeat, so I'm just going to ditto. You know, we've got lots of award winners here with us this evening with the Cartar Council of Governments and the Longleaf Pine. Just a fantastic group of people. And, and I know when you go to naming folks, you know, while the storm was raging, obviously, we were, you're here, you know, what, nine days out? You had your 911 center, getting calls rolled to them here in Graham County from out west, handling that crisis. Emergency management was engaged immediately. You've got animal control people from Graham County out west right now. Butner Public Safety's there. More volunteer fire department sent folks. Not to mention all the private citizens that loaded up their, their trucks and their trailers with, you know, small pieces of equipment like bobcats and that kind of thing that are going out, you know, and I don't want to name names and that kind of thing. So again, but the amount of personnel between our sheriff's office and our, our local law enforcement is just overwhelming. You know, our county counterparts, you know, with the hundred counties in this state, we all know commissioners from the commissioner's standpoint from the western counties, and our staff knows their counterparts in those western counties. So it is, it is family, so that. is, it is family. So, that, that is something. So, I just want to, you know, give a, a big, wholehearted thank you again to our staff here, our local county government, the amount of things that they do on a daily basis that are just behind the scenes that nobody really knows about, but just an amazing group of people and how they put, you know, their one hundred and ten percent of themselves out there for folks that they don't know, they may never meet, but the, the passion, compassion, and the amount of effort that they put forward is just awe inspiring. So, again, for our county employees who do this kind of thing, three sixty-five, twenty-four seven, it just, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. There are a lot of proclamations this, this, this season, as there always are, Domestic Violence Month we've got going on, and an item that's near and dear to my heart. Got my tie on tonight, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For ladies out there, please make sure you do your self-exams. If you see anything, feel anything, go have it looked at. Better to err on the side of caution. My wife's two years past her surgery right now as a survivor of breast cancer, and, you know, glory to God, the people that were able to, to work with her, you know, and again, it was a feeling, an inclination, went and had it checked, and thank God. That's all I have to say about that. So, enough of that. Again, we appreciate each and every one of you. I know that there was a little snafu this morning, getting, this morning, afternoon, getting started, our meeting, we were a couple of minutes late, but for those at home watching on live stream, appreciate you taking the opportunity to that, and I'm so glad that this board took that step to modernize and bring us into this, this century. So, with that, we do have the need for an executive session, closed session after this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, before you go leave, I, I did forget one more thing.
Yeah, I was gonna go to other matters, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just, please keep the Florida in your prayers. I mean, I have two children, four grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren that are in the eye of that storm.
Yes, and again.
At it that way.
Right.
So, please keep them in your prayers.
Yes. Yep. It is hurricane season. So, again, you know, from a local standpoint, seventy-two hours. First seventy-two is on you. You need to be prepared because people might not be able to get to you. You need to make sure your neighbors are ready, you know. It's like the plane. Put your mask on first, take care of your, your, your children and the things that are next to you, but you, as an individual citizen of this county and this United States, needs to be as prepared as you possibly can to allow for those who aren't as smart as the rest of us and are prepared. Okay, so again, first seventy-two's on you. Any other matters? Okay, so at this time, we have a need to go into a closed session for economic development as allowed by General Statute one forty-six, one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A four. We have a need for personnel action under General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A six, and do we have attorney-client matter as well?
We do.
And we also have an attorney-client privileged communication as well. Oh, absolutely. So, if we can have a motion to.
I'll make that motion if we can have that biodecade.
Second.
Got a motion to go in a closed session by Commissioner Hinman, seconded by Commissioner Wilford, and we're gonna take a ten-minute recess before going to that thing. Is there a, you've heard the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, sign. Motion carries. We stand at recess for ten minutes.